Do you use Excel?
I had to recreate.
I don't have Excel in my computer, so I have to use the different.
We're live?
And it doesn't, they don't talk.
So we're live. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started, August first, twenty twenty four at six thirty. Uh, this is our meeting for our budget workshop. So a special session meeting, and we are gonna be discussing our budget stats. So we're gonna get started with, uh, an introduction of the budget.
Gracious heavenly Father, respectful for this meeting here tonight to discuss our city budget. We ask that you will guide us to be a good, to be good stewards of our city finances, and that you will lead us to make decisions that will benefit any endeavors towards progress and prosperity. Please watch over our city staff, crews, police, fire department, and our citizens. Keep everyone safe, and may we feel your presence as we go about our daily lives. We ask all these things in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always want the flat, the flat.
Oh, yeah. It comes right down to that event.
Well, can we start getting this?
You know how hard it was to get from now to later on?
Um, is there any announcements?
Um, we don't have to do this right at the second, but this is our second, our next, um, budget meeting. I am having a medical procedure done, so I will not be available that day, so when are we gonna move that?
Okay, yeah, that's the one that you, uh...
Yeah, that I need to move that, and then I realized that I could just come and say, say it here.
I mean, I, I would think we could. Do you, do y'all wanna keep that email stuff going and, and hammer out the dates? Do we wanna figure out a date today?
So we're wanting to cancel the next date?
Yeah, I'm just not available.
She's having something medically done, so, um...
Could still override to the first week of September. So just skip that one and go to the next one?
The eighth or the twenty?
Or just, or just shift them, because you're talking about the one on the eighth, correct?
Um, hold on, let me make sure, and then email.
Was the email on the, the one?
Yeah, the one on the twenty first.
Okay.
We may not even do that one.
Yeah, let's just, let's just kinda, let's just kinda, let's discuss that one on, we've got one on the eighth, then on the fifteenth, wasn't it?
Yes.
So let's, let's re-interview that on the fifteenth and see what we even do.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yep.
Um, Michael, you don't have any announcements? I'm trying to think of some things that may have happened within the city or...
Well, we do have the auction, uh, Saturday morning. Uh, the preview is at nine AM, and the auction starts at ten AM. Um, I would invite everybody to look into that.
That's a sewer plant.
It is at the sewer plant, about halfway down the road, so...
What's the address?
Uh, fourteen oh eight, I think, fourteen oh eight Rabbit Cove.
Is this the same one that's online?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but the, the actual...
Well, it's online and...
Items are gonna be there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's online and live, the auction.
I thought it was online only.
I thought there was some kind of event we just had, I guess, around two weeks out, anyway. Um, so you might know when the next cleanup is?
Yes, you got it? It's in my calendar.
I think you're right.
I guess it should.
I think it is the fourteenth. So we're getting pretty small, you're, I mean, you're a month away from that next weekend.
Oh, the backup plant tour is on the tenth. So if you feel like you could make that date, August tenth, at nine o'clock in the morning, please shoot me an email.
I am available for that.
Okay, that way I can figure out, you know, how many's gonna be there, if I can do it by myself, or if I need to have another operator.
Yeah.
Um, August tenth, alright, let's see.
Is anyone here gonna join for that?
Nine AM.
That one is where, at the one on Rabbit Cove?
Yeah.
No, this one's on, this one's on Blaylock.
This is the plant tour that was rescheduled.
This is on Blaylock, and this one, the other one is at?
The sewer plant.
Yeah. The auction's on Rabbit Cove.
Okay.
Alright, um, just a, a reminder, Moby's in the park on the tenth as well that evening. Uh, and then Moby's in the park again on the twenty fourth. Uh, let's see, the next cleanup is September fourteenth at eight, eight AM. We did receive a phone call from a ministry that, uh, apparently he's been setting up at the wagon wheel to do things of that nature that wants to bring a mini gospel fest to the park. And, uh, I'd like to make sure that's on our upcoming agenda, so we can talk about it. They just need one pavilion and I think it's...
They're doing real good, they're down there every weekend cooking hamburgers.
Yeah, I think it's a good cause, so...
We'll make sure we get that on our agenda, if you remember, remind us.
And that's one of the big pavilions in our...
Which one, on the east end, by the grill?
The one that has the switch on.
By the grill, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll have someone come out with me.
I went, I went and tripped all the burgers, but I never could make it work. I had to run a cord over to the other side of the gate, across the entrance, 'cause the one on that side of the gate doesn't work either.
Okay.
I think those two are on the same one, I'm sure.
Is that all for announcements? Going once, going twice, down? And then no citizens input? Or do we want any citizens, yeah, some here? Alright, who has the first question? Or do y'all just wanna go line by line?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm new to this process, so if there's anyone that, um, that has been around the block, that's, I know y'all, this is not your first radio on this, anything that can help me as I maneuver through this. I don't wanna ask so many questions that I have this year until ten o'clock, and I know that I am prone to ask a lot of questions, so...
Well, do you have any questions to kick it off that might help you get a little more comfortable?
How to begin? We just line by?
Typically, we go line by line, and if somebody has any questions, you know, we, we stop at those and go along.
Are there any things that are like we should discuss first, because they are higher in priority, which then dictates other things that are lesser priority?
Typically, you wanna look at what your total income is gonna be and your total expense. And then, based on those two numbers, how far apart are they, how close are they? And then, obviously, the key ones that usually get asked every single year is, you know, well, that's in general fund, that's not in this one.
Okay.
You'll have fun with that one, I'm sure. Uh, anyways, and here it's usually if there's penalties, polycarts, sewer questions, uh, maintenance questions as far as our supplies and maintenance, uh, usually lift station questions as far as the budget for that, uniforms, which a lot of these numbers have, you're gonna notice they didn't change from this current budget. It's just not possible really to, to increase right now, so... There are, there are some small increases, but...
I have one.
Sure.
Maybe we can just kick this off. Uh, item number one, two, five, two, one, zero, seven, uh, reconnects.
Yes.
Um, I noticed you only allow, you only budgeted twenty thousand, so with growth, is that gonna be enough?
Well, on this particular line item, you know, typically, this is based on really how our economy's doing. You know, this year, there's a lot of people struggling, so that number is higher typically, in a better economy, that number is lower. So there's no way to really predict next year, you know, in that category. So I try to just stay relatively close to where our trends are, where are we trending at?
Yeah, that was, that was...
It's a tough guessing, it is. Almost, almost all of these, if not all of these, are based on trends.
And what is technically a reconnect?
Uh, it's when a bill's not paid on time, and then there's fees and things of that nature, and we go back out and turn the meter back on.
Yeah, it's basically, we have...
Hold on, we got two different ones, man.
Oh, I'm looking at mine that I made notes on, sorry.
Oh, you're looking at the old one? Here, full of Kevin running, putting X on the top of that one.
Okay, so...
That's what I did. I'm like, I better X that, because I'm fixing to screw this all up some other way.
Okay, well, I understand. Sorry, yeah.
As of right now, of course, so one more note, just to kinda help. Income typically doesn't match, uh, expense until the end of September. And the reason for that is typically your months of June, July, August, September, your revenue is more than, you know, January, February, March, and April. So at this time of year, if you guys have a current P and L, you can see that on income, we're at ninety percent, but on expense, we're at sixty-eight percent. So the most important thing is that your income is higher than your expense, honestly, so... Yeah.
And then I have another one.
Okay.
Drop down to one, two, five, two, one, two, two, that's SRA grant.
Yes.
Um, in the actuals, I noticed those are blank, is that just something we're just carrying over?
No, not at all, so every year, we want that there in the event that we do qualify for the grant.
Oh.
And I believe that this next spring, we're gonna qualify for the grant.
We are?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, so I wanna back up, one, two, one, two, five, two, one, one, two, to the roadboards.
Yes.
Are we not doing them, we keep budgeting?
It's hit or miss, it depends on, you know, if a house is gonna go on a road where we have to do one, you know, the year before, we had several of those.
But we don't have nothing showing that we had anything.
Not this year, we have.
This year we did.
That caught Kevin by some.
Even the year before, we don't show we had anything.
Well, the year before, we did, so I'll have to get into that and find out what the actuals were.
Okay.
Because the year before, I believe we had seven.
Yeah, can you check on that, because there's...
It should be.
I know for a fact, year, a year ago...
Well, we did two of them, Maiselyne alone, so...
We did the ones that go across from the closure.
Then we did two on Rabbit Cove, that's four.
So that's one, one, two, five, two, one, one, two, roadboards. We should have something in the actuals for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes.
I'm trying to look and see if there's, if it was in the expense, I have found that several were put in the wrong location.
So they have it backed up to the...
Well, actually, Michael?
Yeah.
We may not have had any that were income generating.
I have, yeah, so...
Yeah, some of those were income generating, yeah, 'cause especially on, on Maiselyne.
Did we charge for those?
Yes. Yes.
Because, yeah, if you go back to...
I see an expense on that.
If you go back to the expense...
There's a twenty-five hundred dollar expense from that year, from twenty-two, twenty-three. Aren't we always charging for this, because it's technically like, you know, you have to apply for a permit?
It depends on where you're at in town. If it's an asphalt road, Bolson Road, yes. If it's a rock road, and it's on a narrow road that we can dig across it, then we'll do that.
Yeah, I can see they're gonna have to do one.
Thank you for that.
They're gonna have to do a tap in my neighborhood, but that road's so narrow, they, we can't do a bore really.
Right, we'd have to dig across.
They could have a board machine in the middle of some main yard.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna have to dig that one and patch that.
I wanna back up one more, one, two, five, two, one, one, miscellaneous. I know for the last three years, we said we're doing away with miscellaneous.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, had the same question.
But we're still using that.
Well, it's miscellaneous income, we talked about getting rid of miscellaneous in expense.
There shouldn't be any miscellaneous. Miscellaneous, well, that's the same thing for the last three years, there shouldn't be no miscellaneous, anything.
Okay.
You came in from something.
Discuss about being the...
We're gonna budget for it.
That's the one that's miscellaneous.
Sorry, yeah, Kevin suggested that when we have the citywide cleanups, the scrap that we pull from those cleanups should be income in the miscellaneous and use it for that no longer.
And, um...
So we could rename it.
Something, but there could be, there could be incomes that we, for whatever reason, have come into the city that you, you can't really plan for, like that scrap. I mean, we, we don't know for sure we're gonna get that, but more than likely, we'll get something.
Well, would you guys like for us to rename it?
I'd prefer we rename miscellaneous, it's just...
So other income, so call it other income?
That's just in the back. It really is.
Contingent.
I mean, is there, if it's gonna be called miscellaneous, 'cause it's a grouping of various items?
Right, that are rare.
There are just not, there's not like a little detail underneath miscellaneous?
Well, for us, there is, in a county, you know, there's line item details, so we know exactly what is in that income line.
Yeah, I think it's just probably a matter of seeing it, is maybe the concern?
It, it is, I mean, um, last year, we budgeted fifteen, but we brought in twenty-eight, ninety.
That's also, you mentioned that...
Last year, yeah, last year it was twenty-one.
Last year, when we did budgeting, it was supposed to be changed to, for the dump.
That's what I thought, and we did rename it.
Yeah, I'm thinking this line.
Yeah, that's right, so Chris, when we talked about it last year, we were supposed to rename it, some, for some reason, it did get renamed. So we need to make sure it does the...
Rername to dubs?
Yes.
I mean, that sounds, that's typically what it's for.
That's all it is, I mean, it's...
So would you guys be okay with that, if we call that, uh...
If that's what we're...
Recycling, recycling.
Yeah, everything I've heard, recycling is where it goes in there.
So I think recycling would be the right, thank you guys for that.
Yes, sir. And so, I, back to grants, um, I'm a little confused, I thought we did get a grant this year that you were, that's the one...
Not from them, not from SRA.
Oh, SRA, sorry, sorry, I was looking at a grant, okay. Um...
Your equipment sales is your auction.
Yes. And I believe that next year, we could have the potential to auction something else.
Okay, I found something here earlier that I think might be a clerical error.
Okay.
On the fire department, uh, it's one, two, five, two, one, three, oh, on page one. And then, wow, that's loud.
Well...
And then one, two, six, three, two, three, oh, on page five.
Okay, so I'll, so you want me to go ahead and address the fire donations one more?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that one's, that's our water bill donation, yes. The second one is what we, I, I don't understand what it is, we're not pulling it out too.
Well, as, as far as the income, the only reason I set it up that number is because if you look at the current number, so it made sense to just take it a few dollars up and, and round it off.
So we're good with that, well, the question is, why is it on two different lines?
Yes, it's on page one and on page five.
Once the expense is payout.
Right, that's the income, then the expense comes out.
And the other ones, okay.
The expense goes to the fire department.
Yes.
Gotcha.
It's accounting for the money coming in.
Money comes in from the water bills, and then it gets paid out to the fire department.
Yes.
And I'm just curious, on one, two, five, two, one, two, oh, what is checking interest?
This is, we got it from the checking account.
That's that little bitty two, three dollars they give you for having a million dollars in the bank.
I, I actually was thinking about this on the way over, um, why don't we have, it's in the money market account? So we're making, like, right now, Jan is in my money market account, and we don't have half a million dollars in it, or whatever, a million dollars in it, we're pulling in three hundred dollars a month on our money market account.
So there's, there's a lot of changes that we have found that we need to make going forward that I think in previous years is just oversight, we didn't think about it, don't look at it, but we're seeing these things, and if, if you've looked at what we've done the past three years, and where we're at now, we have cleaned it up, our spending is much better.
Yeah.
And now we're learning that we should have, like, and we're getting off topic, but investments and things of that nature that in the past, we didn't do, so...
Well, in, in my personal opinion, I would put that one at the top of the list of things to start addressing, 'cause I mean, like, let's just say, three hundred dollars, like me and Dan, I mean, that's thirty-six hundred dollars a year, and we don't have nearly as much money in the account as, as this...
I've actually spoke with, uh, one of the banks that we use about that, and kinda see what it looks like, and how it would play out. So there's, the conversation's been started.
Okay, okay, awesome.
I see you guys are on different pages, we typically, typically go page by page, so where do you want me?
Yeah, yeah.
On two.
So, so, I mean, if we're, if we're looking at this, everybody's looked through your water, your sewer billing, everybody, you kinda understand, because there was some changes there, right? Nobody had any questions, we understood why, and, you know, just kinda going through those. We had the question about the reconnects. Um, we had the one on the roadboards, everybody's good with these numbers so far, as we're seeing them. Um, if you notice, I wanna point this one out to make sure everybody did see it, you know, we have an actual right now of a hundred thousand, one fifty on water taps, which is one, two, five, two, one, zero, nine. And we still got a pretty big number there. So, you know, we, we do have, we still have some houses still coming, there's still gonna be quite a few taps coming in this city.
Well, and right there, I think we wanted to play it conservative, you know, if y'all remember from last year, when we were talking about taps, I got a little excited, I shot real high, and luckily, we stepped it down, and then now we're exceeding that number.
Right.
Although, the number I called for last year was, I believe, a hundred to a hundred and twenty, and we're at a hundred, one fifty, so... But I think if we leave it at the ninety, we're, we're being conservative.
Hundred two. Um, so I did have a question for one, two, five, one, one, six, dash, or dot, one, uh, garbage inside, and the next one, which is the, uh, garbage, other Mary, did we get in touch with, uh, actually, it's really been all of our garbage right there, all, shoot, there's four, five, six lines.
There's...
Did we get in touch with Woody to find out if we're good, or did we? I used, I had the contract somewhere, but I couldn't find it.
I have it.
I thought I had it on my computer, and what do you...
Well, I thought you skinned it in, yeah, but I have the hard copy.
Do you remember what the contract dates were?
It's up in twenty twenty-five.
So we should, okay, so we should be good with our contract.
Well, last year, they...
But they did, they did hit a start, I get it, because, I mean, everybody, we're all gonna pay more for gas, bread, milk, everything, right?
Right.
So I guess we do still need to try to get Woody.
Yeah, he's on my list, 'cause there's been a long list, people would check on pricing and stuff, so I need to get it.
I mean, at least before we finalize this, we need to know.
Yeah.
Right, because this number could be off.
Well, especially after last year.
Yeah, and that's the last thing we need, is to have it wrong here, and then we end up with a big lopsided one, you know?
When does it expire in twenty twenty-five?
Uh, I will have to get back to you, I think it's July, June or July in that area.
And are there any other, is there any other games in town for this?
There is, um, if you want, I can put an email together and send it out, that way you guys can see what it looks like.
I don't know, I was thinking it was that.
I mean, we can't do anything with it right now, anyway.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry, it's this year.
It's, no, but it's on, no, it's on, but I'm saying it runs with our budget, it's not, it's not off months.
There's a...
I'll make sure at the next meeting.
Uh, but, but just make a note, let's make sure that we for sure lock in to know that we're safe, right? If our number's good, sweet, but we need, I, I think that's one that we don't really know at all. I mean, some of these other ones, I think y'all believe, you and Mary have worked really good together.
We did.
And I appreciate you guys for that, um, so...
Will we get locked into another contract if we haven't made, done any action?
Well, I think there's, there's two sides to that, I think there are those who do not wanna go away from them, and then I think there are those who are ready to move past them. And the biggest concern in the past has been the switch out of polycarts, you know, that scares a lot of folks, so I think honestly, it's gonna be a, uh... I don't know, I don't know if I wanna say that, I've...
Oh, what?
Yeah.
What, am I the only one that, oh, I'm sorry, that is strange, turn it off.
So...
They catch me off guard.
But, but, I don't know if that answered your question, it was good information, but to answer your question, yes, essentially, if we just said, hey, we like that, and they don't check on it, and double-check our contract dates, yeah, if we're in the, if we're in the middle of it, we're locked in, what else are we gonna do? That's what has happened to us.
Well, and there's been two contract, it's three contract extensions.
But, but remember, was it a year ago, two years ago, that's kinda what happened to us?
Yeah, I've seen this, that's...
We were just, we were just locked outside in the company, and it's like, well, we screwed up, and we just had to go.
Yeah.
So, let's just check on it, check our contract dates, and, and make sure what they tell us, if they're gonna have a rate increase, we need to know what that is, or if they're projecting a rate increase, we need to know what that is.
Yeah.
Um, all these guys with trash companies, they know what these city budgets run, the years, what the, you know, months are, so they should be able to tell us that.
Well, and their increase is also consistent, it's typically between five and seven percent.
So we just need to, we need to find that out for sure. Um, I, I'm almost positive, I'm almost positive that we're through this year. The, the contract goes through the end of twenty twenty-five, I think.
It's twenty twenty-four now, but I'll make sure I, I shoot all the...
Well, the only reason why I'm saying that is because I feel like that if it was twenty twenty-four, we would've already heard from them. And he just brought them, he just brought them donuts like two weeks ago, he would've mentioned something about, hey, we're, we're working on your new contract. I mean, it...
I felt, yeah, I felt like something...
It would've been smart for him as a sales guy, right, to say that, I mean, I've got a couple of customers that their budget runs like ours do, and we've been talking about next year's stuff for the last two and a half, three months, so he would've already started branching those conversations, I would think. But, let's make sure, protect ourselves on the trash.
Definitely. Um, what's carryover, the, I mean, you're not gonna know until really the end of the year?
Um, at this point, I'm just basing that on the current trend, it doesn't mean that we're gonna hit that number, although we could hit that number, be plus or minus. And if you're asking what carryover is, carryover is a way that we pay our payroll through the, the winter months until the revenue starts generating again.
Okay, but we, what, we don't have numbers for previous years in there, so?
There should be, yeah, it should be, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
All right, so you're seeing that there's no actuals? I'm looking at the actual line item, actuals.
It wasn't entered...
Okay, got it.
Into the carryover, so it wasn't put in, like, the end of the year, we had the expense for the income of this budget carryover. When we go for next, by the time we have next budget year, we'll be in the new system, but that'll be entered, what we end up carrying over will go into the budget, so you see actual numbers.
Yeah, and basically, like Michael said, the carryover, we really don't start getting tax dollars until... January, I think, somewhere in there, January, so, you know, we've gotta have that money to float.
Yeah.
Until we start getting those tax, that tax dollar again.
Right, thank you.
Um, speaking of tax dollars, that's something else that, that Mary's working on trying to...
I got it.
Trying to get, trying to get our info on that, on when we're gonna be the tax break and all that stuff.
I got some answers on that today, just gotta fill out a lot of paperwork.
Okay, so are we moving on to page two, guys?
I did kinda have a comment, Mike, a lot of these numbers that you have slipped in here, is that because you're anticipating growth?
On some things, yes.
Okay.
So each year is kinda like with a tax.
And I thought, well, maybe he's trying to be proactive and think about...
On some things, yes, so like last year with the tax.
Are there any ones that you wonder on, though?
No, well, yes, actually, like, on, on the salaries, the one, two, six, one, zero, one, zero, two, there, there's a little, there's a pretty significant jump there, but I think it's because you're down in employees right now, and you're just thinking about...
No, actually, so, previous years passed, we were actually under the average hiring wage in North Texas. So over the past two years, we have worked to bring our hiring wage and what we pay for each position, and, and based on knowledge, and we are now current with every city around us, and we're actually even competitive now. So for the first time in many years, we are competitive, but the reason that number grew is once we got everyone to a wage that matched cities around us, our, our payroll jumps up.
That makes sense.
And then, of course, you...
And we're starting, we've got almost a full crew, well, basically, we do...
Almost full crew, we had new guys here today.
But, but she did ask you something, and I, I think you had made mention to me a week or two ago, at some point, yes, what you said is something that they hope is to add that tenth person.
We're hoping, we were hoping this year would be the year, but we'll see.
And, and so I think that may be some of it that you have in there, too.
Yes.
You seem to want to tell us that, I think he's sandbagging on his answers.
What specific role are you looking to hire for at some point?
A, a tenth man, the additional guy.
Person.
Not as some specialist, not some specialist, not some specialist that does a special thing in one man.
We're, we're getting to a place now to where, of course, our, if you've looked at our work orders, they're growing.
Yeah.
And it's consistently higher and higher and higher, so the tenth person, thank you, Mary, uh, would come in and be able to carry that additional workload.
You missed that in, in announcements, you could've gave some announcements, certifications. I mean, I'll just throw it out there, he's got some people scheduled.
Yes.
For some classes, and you and...
Me, Kevin, and Morgan are going to test, yeah.
So they're, we're fixing, three people take, test for next level.
So, one, two, six, one, 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 two, travel training water?
Yes.
Um, we've missed it every year.
Well, some of that has, some of that is kinda out of my purview, and the reason for that is some classes that are administrative are also for the ladies in the office, and those classes are not online, you do have to travel for those classes, um, so...
So we need to look at that, we budgeted three, we spent forty-eight, we budgeted three, we spent forty-one, we budgeted three... We budgeted three again, and it looks like it's time to move that up.
Yeah, I'd agree.
At least, yeah.
I would agree with that. You're right. I, I've held back for the past three years on that one, so.
And we're missing a mark, so we got a trend, we ought to be able to hit that mark with four, forty-five, somewhere in there.
I was gonna say you were, you've got the sewer line too that you haven't hit that we have pulled anything from for this year as far as actuals.
Right, so we're technically not over. We just chose to pull from that one.
Yeah.
So there's a combination of five thousand for training. So one of the things we're gonna do that we think will help us be more efficient is we're going to collapse all of those, except for ones that, like supplies. You need to know what we're spending on sewer, what we're spending on water, so those, we're not gonna collapse those. So like travel and training, just one number, one line item. What you guys have been asking for.
If we, if we had, if, if we had a sewer department and a water department.
It would make sense.
Sense. But we, we are not there. We, we're probably, none of us will see it. None of, I don't, I don't think any of us will see that. This city be big enough to have a whole sewer department and a whole water department, so.
So out of five thousand dollars, we, yeah, we were.
I was just sitting here, I already knew the answer to that.
I've been waiting.
Well, Chris caught me off guard, I'm sorry. So we didn't overspend it, my bad.
I think you might have a sharper point.
Wow, you're on me.
What about SRA water, water purchase? What does that mean?
Do we wanna leave that?
Well, I think, I think what we need to say there is, we'll leave it, but we need to make sure that whenever it comes time, to approve this budget, we all have to say, hey, we want these line items combined. And it should, and it should say travel, training, water, sewer. One line item, and that one line item will have five thousand dollars in it, which cures your problem. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And, and, I mean, if we're just talking about it right now, there are a ton of things that that would be what we would do. Let's say salaries, right? Because we've got water, sewer, well, everything always just comes out of one, and it makes our overtime look.
Yeah.
Like way bad. If you look at our overtime on a P and L, you're like, holy crap, they done blown the overtime out of the water. But if you look down to the next line item, nothing taken out.
So just to add to that, because Robin asked a good question, is, this is the first year you're seeing water sewer salaries together. That's why it looks like such an increase.
Okay.
When they're separated, you would have saw four hundred, three hundred, or whatever it is, three hundred, two hundred. But now they're combined, so you're seeing just one line item, and it looks like it grew exponentially. We combined them.
Yeah, but that needs to happen with that travel, too.
Well, it's either a highlight or my coat, and I like all three of those.
Okay.
I think, I think we need to make sure that, that you take a really good look at this. And you might, you might sit down if you get a chance with Mary. And when we do bring this back to say, hey, stamp of approval, you need to make sure you tell us which one of these we're gonna combine.
Can we go ahead and do it and give you the next, next water sewer, maybe a.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Draft of what it looks like.
That's what I'm saying, because we will, like you said, supplies, you're gonna have to keep them separated, because if you don't, you're gonna be like, I don't know what I spent on sewer, I don't know what I spent on water. Supplies, you need to keep those separated, but our time, it doesn't make sense. We're never gonna have a department that only does water or only does sewer.
We do everything.
Possible.
There's several things on here.
There is.
And Mary and Barbie met.
There's a bunch, it'll clear.
It'll reduce it by two pages if we do it right. So the answer.
So the P and L is.
I tell all the other, the other departments, I'm like, look at mine, look at y'all's. Yes.
You and I talked about it two years ago.
We did, and we just did do it, but here we are, we're doing it now. Uh, SRA question.
Yeah.
Um, SRA water purchases, us taking water out of the lake. We had to pay for it, so we pay them so many cents per gallon. That's what that line item is for.
I'm a dummy here. Why are we taking, why are we buying water out of the lake? Uh, just for our, our water?
Well, right, no, yeah.
Okay, um, alright, I was thinking like we're pumping it for some reason.
Well, we are.
Well, no, no, but, but I mean, for our community.
Oh, okay, that'd be nice. I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
So can we go ahead and compress now?
That's what we're saying. We're gonna go ahead and do that because you're gonna look at these.
Things on here that we can.
Yeah. Well, she has been working on making a list to where you guys can see what needs to be separated and what needs to be collapsed. So by the next time we do this, hopefully it's collapsed, you guys like it, you've heard it, and we can.
And I can include a list of what we collapsed into one, so it's easier to.
Okay.
See.
And that'll make it easier.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because right now, let's just say for appeal purpose.
It's a nightmare to separate.
You've got, you've got forty to choose from, and you could have, say, twenty-three.
Right.
It's a big difference.
Right.
Now, did you get some kind of quote on the tower inspections for them to go down?
The reason they went down is because we have one tank that's out of service until rehab.
Oh, the ground source.
So we saved some money because they don't have to inspect that it's out of service. Next year it'll go back up and I'll have to, or we will have to agree to a new three-year term.
Moving on to page three?
Yeah, it'll make it easier.
I, um, I will ask about overtime. He, you know, um, he just said it's not outrageous. I mean, it doesn't look outrageous to me, but just like explain like the shifts of everybody and how often overtime happens. And is it always just emergencies or there's?
That's it.
Yeah.
That's it, so as they come out.
I mean, is our team, I don't, I'm not sure to answer this. Is our team like eight to five, Monday through Friday, no matter what?
So they do have set hours, Monday through Friday, so anything outside of that, then it's a, it's an on-call, so. And there's a rotation, so each guy has a week at a time, and if it requires additional guys to come out, well, then he calls whoever he needs to come out.
Okay, so there's not an opportunity to do like a second shift, so we're.
We're not quite there. It'd be the same as if we were big enough to have a water department, a sewer department.
Well, okay, well, how about not a second shift, but like having staggered, staggered shifts?
Well, during the summertime, our hours in the field are seven to three thirty. In years past, we have had some folks get a little too hot working till four thirty, five o'clock when it was a hundred and twelve, so.
Yeah.
The idea was summertime hours are seven to three thirty, and then wintertime hours are eight to four thirty.
So, but I guess my question here is like.
You, you're saying spread them out?
Yeah, we have ten people or nine people that have two people that work like an afternoon, evening shift and a weekend shift.
I think we're getting close to that. I think we're getting close to that. I think, once we get to a place to where we've grown another two or three, we could do that. But right now.
Still gonna have overtime because water main.
I get it, I'm just trying to see.
You're trying to minimize the overtime, but to do that, we would have to get to a place where you're right, we had two different shifts and we're just.
Here's the other side. Probably eighty-five percent of their work requires light.
Yes.
Um, yeah, we got light in the plants, like, like the sewer plant, there's, the sewer plant is dark, all outside.
Yeah.
There's, there's one, well, there's two of these, definitely, but. And all, all the work, the workings of the sewer plant, it's all outside, so that would be kind of a task. Um, there are some lights down there, but not enough that you would be able to safely work and perform the sewer duties down there.
Yeah, you're right, it would be dangerous to, well, a lot of the jobs would be dangerous to do in the dark.
Yeah, and we have to do in the emergency situations, but then the second part of what I was gonna say is, really and truly for our people to work like, say, let's just call it if we're saying an evening shift, if that was four o'clock to whatever. That wouldn't work out very good for our citizens, where citizens are not gonna really, black people in their yard digging at ten o'clock at night. I mean, if it's an emergency situation, we all would deal with it, but if it was the normal and we're out trying to do taps at ten o'clock at night.
Right.
We're not leaving from life.
Yeah, okay, well, take, take the evenings out of it, then it could be weekends, like, the half the staff gets Saturday, Sunday off, half the staff gets Thursday, Friday off or whatever. I'm just asking.
And that would work, but the willingness of this, of the type people that are in, this isn't retail, you know, if, if they're working at Easy Mart, then everybody knows when you work at Easy Mart, Sonic, wherever, that, those, some people work Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. And then the other people work the rest of the week, then you don't have any overtime. This, you know, these blue collar type guys and gals, they're kind of used to weekends.
Yeah.
Unless it's overtime.
You know, I mean, I, that's how I came up. I came up as a technician and I can promise you, if I didn't have to work weekends, I'd look forward to it. And, and I think if my boss would have told me back then, hey, uh, your new work week is.
Sunday through Thursday.
Day through Sunday, I'd have been like, yeah, uh, you think.
Well, yeah, you can't get away with that on current employees, but if you're hiring new employees, then you plan for it.
If, if we were bigger, I would see something like that working. I think right now with our, with our field of people and the size of our city, we're just, or where we're at, I mean, and, and, you know.
Cause like that's the reason, just the one line item is thirty-one hundred dollars a month in overtime, so. Just ask the question. Alright.
And, and it's something that has been getting control better and better.
Yeah, that's good, that's good to know.
Now we're on page two, right?
Yeah.
So we are officially off of page two now?
Yeah.
Lots of questions on the next one.
Get after it.
Yes, I've been on page three for a while.
I've got a question on page one.
I see she's, she's picking on me, see.
Okay, on page three, the very first one, employee insurance.
It went up again.
But I, I figured that's what happened.
Across the board.
Unfortunately, for a city our size, we don't get the price range that a bigger city would get. You know, they got more people, so their rates are a lot lower.
Yes.
Ours have gone up over the past five years consistently, ten percent a year, and it's almost to a point where we're, I mean, they're gonna make it harsh for working person, too.
Well, we're looking at, we're trying to get some other plan options, but she's still saying the price increase is still anywhere from.
Yeah. Insurance of any kind has gone exponentially. It is horrific.
And see, we have a broker that helps us. It's our, yeah, it's rolling a pool, and so she, she gave us options, but to keep it where we're at, competitively where we're, where we're going without changing major things, it's, you're looking at eight to ten percent.
Just an example, what is it? Uh, not, for my wife, I paid nine hundred and forty-eight a month. And this new one, I will pay twelve hundred and eight or twelve hundred and something a month for her.
Yeah, it's gonna affect us too. I mean, across board, our company as well.
Alright, you said you had sixteen. I'm ready.
I got it. Okay, on, one, two, six, one, one, two, one.
Okay.
The office supplies for the water. I'm looking at the actuals here, and you had four thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Yet you budgeted fifteen hundred. Is that enough?
Well, this was a once in a long time situation. We had to buy a lot of new computers. We won't have that type of expenses next year.
And printers. Didn't want, I want to make sure you shortchanged yourself there.
No, all of our equipment decided it didn't want to come to work anymore, so.
And that's one of those that we're, we will combine too, so it'll be a total of two thousand.
Okay.
So are you not, are you not, but those on there is equipment?
Um, just office supplies, so whether it be paper, pencils, or a computer, we, we put all those in one.
And then the same question, one, two, six, one, one, two, four, on the postage for the water. Yeah, the actual showing five thousand six hundred and ninety-one forty-two, but you've only budgeted five thousand, is that, because postage could go up.
Postage will be, with our new system, postage is gonna change.
It will.
Yes, because you'll have that ability to opt into paperless, so postage will go down when we did fund view.
Oh, we're gonna go paperless?
Yes, well, we're.
It's, it's your choice, though. Yeah, you have to choose.
People will take advantage of.
And that'll, and that'll save a whole lot.
Oh, yeah.
I think there's gonna be a lot.
I mean, I think there will be a pretty good savings and, and it was pretty comparable to what we're already paying now, but we won't have the annual fee, uh, to pay USPS. It'll be in with our fund view payments.
Is there an auto draft, um, option without that fee? Cause we cha- charge a fee now.
Everybody charges that three percent fee?
Well, we, uh, no, there's a, there's a different fee. It ticks them off.
We will have a third party again, and it's still gonna happen to them.
I think it's, uh, it's a competitive rate fee is what they were saying, so it may be the one point nine and whatever it is. It's the credit card convenience fee, so it's gonna be up to the merchant itself.
We can check into that, though. With fund view, there, there may be a possibility that there could be some auto draft options.
Yeah, I mean, there is an auto draft option now, and there still will be then.
Yeah.
That'll be introduced to it like an ACH.
Okay.
So now is the auto draft option, is it charging convenience fee?
Not the auto draft. The other one's just if you use your credit card on our credit card system or your ACHs, so then you pay the convenience fee, that's like two ninety-five.
Yeah. That fee makes my husband mad.
I learned, I learned something.
Ready for the next one? One, two, six, one, one, two, seven. Okay, that actual and that increase, the actual is two thousand ninety-two dollars and eighty-two cents.
That's fund view. That's our new system.
Fund view, that's what I figured.
So what, so what they did is they took the total cost of fund view and they looked at, you know, how much of the system is water sewer? How much, I mean, obviously, within the city, water sewer is the biggest part of our, I guess, quota of business, right?
Right.
So, yeah, that's the, that's the.
If you signed the contract that we have, and if you need another contract, I have one that breaks it down to what, who pay, who's, what department's going there.
Yeah.
Alright, the next one, and I, I, I'm probably gonna answer my own question here. On one, two, six, one, one, three, oh, the property insurance, that went up a lot, but I gotta tell you, my homeowner's insurance went up over a thousand dollars this year.
Wow.
So I understand why that number went up on that, on that property insurance.
And that's a combined one as well?
Yeah.
But it, it, I, we were just told that it's fifteen percent as well.
I mean, I mean, that went up over nine thousand dollars, and, and I get it. I understand why.
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
Um, and then I have one more, uh, on one, two, six, one, one, four, one, dot, one. Maintenance supplies, our actuals are at eleven thousand nine hundred seventy-three thirty-five, and you've only budgeted twelve thousand. Is that gonna be enough for you, Mike? Is that a hard one for you sometimes?
It is because you never know what's gonna happen. You know, some years we spend more on supplies for distribution and collections, and some years, we don't. It's just a hard one. I, I wanted to set that one a little higher, but I just didn't see a way to make that happen, so.
Okay.
It's one of those that we're, one thing I can, I can say is, we have got, we've gotten better at managing our process. You know, there was, years past, we didn't do so well, we might overbuy something, underbuy something. But I think we've gotten a lot better as far as our supplies and how we use them and what we spend.
So, back on the, the one, two, six, one, one, three, zero, property insurance water, and then we got property insurance sewer right under. We didn't do anything. Did you already combine those?
I did.
I was guessing that, that's why there wasn't a number on the sewer.
Yeah, I did combine those two.
Alright, so these are combined already. Alright, so we'll see more of that.
Are we on page four?
Hi, Brian. We're a lot tonight. One, two, six, one, one, four, five, the water line improvement. And then if you look down on the next one, one, two, six, one, one, four, five, point one, the sewer line improvement, on the actual, it's showing nothing, so since water line improvement, I would think would be maybe a priority. Could we move the sewer line to five, fifty-five hundred, I mean, the five, wait a minute, the five thousand that you budgeted up into that and give you a total of fifteen thousand?
Unfortunately, I've got, uh, I have to report every year what we do as far as water line improvement and sewer line improvement, so those two have to stay separate.
So, do we need to go back and. So, do we need to go back and look at our actuals in the system?
Yeah.
Cause I know, we've had to have some sewer line.
Right.
We've had to have something in the sewer.
Yeah, there's no way it's zero.
I wouldn't think so. If there is, you're probably gonna.
Go back, we can go back and look at all the water line improvement ones.
You're probably, you're probably gonna get a big black eye if so.
But in the actual on the water line improvement, it's, it, it's more than what you budgeted. So do you, you need to increase that?
Well, that's what I'm wondering if some type got.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, we found some issues in that particular line item that we have corrected and we believe going forward. That number should, should be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I kinda feel like that there's probably some, some sewer line expense.
Yeah, there had to be, cause we bought sewer five.
In that water, I know, I remember, in that water line. So there's gotta be, there's, there's probably something that got shown right wrong.
Okay, can I ask another one? Do you want to answer my question? Cause I've got another one.
Go for it.
Okay, one, two, six, one, one, four, nine. I'm on a roll. Uh, the chemicals for the water.
Yes.
Uh, the actuals are way up there, but the budget is, you got eighty-seven, over eighty-seven thousand in that one. And you've only budgeted sixty thousand. And I know in the past you told us that chemicals just are all up.
Scada and, and our system.
So the only thing that I would remind you guys is the treatment process is based on what's coming in. So for water, for instance. If water's coming in very, very turbid, then we're gonna use more chemicals than if the water's not as turbid. So there's a lot of different factors that go into the chemical part of it. Now, I will say this. This year, until they put in the new actuators to make, you know, we did the upgrade, the first part of the upgrade. Before that, we were using more chemical than now that the system's been upgraded and automated again. So we're saving chemical now.
Okay.
So next year, your chemical cost shouldn't be as high. And I've been told they're not gonna raise our costs for this new budget year. They're gonna keep it the same. As far as sewer, uh, there was several months this year where we ran into issues to where we had to feed the plant, if you will. And we spent more on food for the plant than we have in years past. But it's not an every year consistent thing. It, it changes wildly. It's based on temperature and lots of other factors, so. I would also add that, you know, as far as sewer collections. Things that people put down the drain absolutely have a tremendous effect on the plant treatment process. So for instance, if you have someone that's flushing, let's say, a lot of cleaner, a lot of chemical. It will kill the process and we have to start all over. And when that happens, it's, it's expensive.
Community internet, did y'all hear that? Please stop dumping chemicals down the toilets and in the sinks and the bathrooms.
Thank you for that.
Spread the word out. No tampons either.
Amen. That's a chore every morning.
Seriously.
Everything we push down the toilet, we have to clean off the wall screen at the wastewater point.
Get tampons out of here.
It's a messy, it's a messy.
You'd be surprised if, once we pull out of that thing.
Alright, move around home. Ms. Robin, you got any more questions on this one? Is there any next question?
Robin, Robin's very red.
Oh, God, there you have one another one.
I wanna do a point four there. I'm sorry. I mean, it's hot, it's, it's.
No, but I bet it's a joke, but in all seriousness.
Yes.
You're costing the city more money.
Right. Alright, Robin, I'm ready.
Okay, alright. One, two, six, one, one, five, three, and one, two, six, one, one, five, three, point one. Pumps, motors, R and R water, so and sewer. So I noticed on. The pumps and motors, what have you, on water. The actuals are only showing two thousand sixty-five dollars or forty-one cents. And we did budget twenty thousand. And so you budgeted fifteen, what's?
I was anticipating some pumps and motors going out this year.
Okay.
Um, they didn't, although they are starting to have issues. We've already had to pull one and send it in for repair. So I'm just making sure that this new budget year, I, I anticipate us having issues.
Robin, we were also thinking about this year, we were gonna do the motor on, motor and pump on, uh, headworks.
Yes, but that's actually gonna come out with CDP.
Right.
But, yeah, we thought we, that's true, you're right. So when we planned last year, we, we were under the assumption we were gonna have to replace one of the pumps at headworks.
Ourself.
Ourself, but then we got the grant, so.
So could that maybe likely be considered a contingency?
I just, I, we have a lot of things that are starting to get older and I.
You got three booster pumps that are sitting there.
That are twenty years old, yeah.
Yeah, we got three booster pumps and then you got all your, uh, wet wheel, uh, two wet wheel pumps.
Well, and we now know that, so when we had our inspection, the state said that the two slush pumps that we have. Are not adequate in size. So we're anticipating going ahead and replacing those this year too. And those pumps and motors start around only four thousand, all the way up to twenty, thirty thousand.
Wow, okay. Alright, here's the next one.
Alright.
One, two, six, one, one, five, nine, and one, two, six, one, one, five, nine, point one. Okay, those, are those the USDA grants that we still owe money on?
Yes, so.
Those are given, we have to pay those. Yeah, those are loans.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, and Mary, I'm sure is gonna correct them here in a minute, but I know that one of those is for. Waste water treatment plant that's a forty-two year loan.
Yes, I knew one of them was long.
And so, you know, that's a big payment once a year. But there's some of the other ones that I think over the next year or so, that the payments are gonna start decreasing because we're close to the end of paying them off.
I think so. I'm not a hundred percent on it, but I know I feel like I've seen them going in with these, I mean. Years past, I don't know that they were entered correctly. So I noticed this year, cause I'm going through the August payments on. Phase one, phase two, and phase three. And trying to figure out where they were last year, figure out the payments, we're trying to figure out the budget. Who's next year they're gonna be putting in where they're supposed to be. Last year, they were put in, but all of them in one. Year before that, they weren't put into that one spot at all. Just trying to relocate and.
We're trying to just streamline this and make it consistent to where it doesn't look like, well, we put it here one year, here one. It all needs to go in the same place every year, every time, so.
So I'm sure that this is in the line item somewhere, but it's just coming to mind. Um, so like when, um. We have a oil notice and you have to do extra testing for water. Is that, is that in, in a budget somewhere or is that in the?
It goes under lab fees.
Okay, and so you've, Pat, you've had that every year?
Well, we have our consistent rate that we pay and then we make sure it's a little higher to cover for those situations.
Oh, that's not very much.
Well, don't say that. They may be listening.
And then, I don't remember what this was. I meant to grab my folder when I left the house and just slipped my mind, but. Two months ago or three months ago, we had to adjust the budget, um, specifically for water for a forty-five thousand dollar line item. We also did like three other line items that were like fifteen hundreds, I don't remember.
We did that in income based on us seeing that we were not going to generate that income.
Okay.
So to make sure that your expense is gonna line up with what your income is, we had to reduce that to show a true reflection of expense and income.
Right, but is like, I mean, that carries over in, in a sense. So has that been adjusted for on this budget?
Well, it's in our current budget. So the new budget, that's.
So do you have a plan on this current budget to spend forty-five thousand less to make up for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, 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 wait a minute. No, no.
What, am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, you are. So what we did was adjusted the budget for this fiscal year. Okay, so.
Agreed.
This budget right here has nothing to do necessarily with that adjustment.
Unless it's not accommodated for it.
Well, I see what she's saying now. It's, if you look at our income in this year, it's not there. Whereas it was in this year's budget already.
Right.
So we took those things away. So for the new budget, they're not there.
Okay.
No, yeah, no, we did, yeah, we, well, we're, we're working off the number that we changed to.
Right.
Okay, so we are working off the number.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry.
Because that has, that, that change has been made. We approved that as a council, so that change has been made. So that's all it shows. That's all it shows in our budget now.
Okay.
Is, is what was budgeted, that's our, when we said yes, then that changed it too. That's the budget number for twenty twenty.
Right, our income would look like we're, we're not there.
Yeah.
Christmas.
Well, I think, uh, I think auction was one of them.
Yes, that was one because it.
That really lowered.
Yeah.
I think we had twenty thousand. We lowered it to ten thousand.
Something like that, yeah.
I would say that, uh, the SRA grant of twenty K is a little generous. You think we're gonna get as much work done and all the donations and stuff done just to qualify that next year?
I think if we set the bar high, we have to meet it. And I think we will.
We got it. Next.
We had nothing to burn in a week or two.
I'll fix that by two.
Okay, one, two, six, three, one, one, three, and one, two, six, three, one, one, three, point one. Those are TCEQ, five permits for water and sewer, and I've noticed those went down.
Yes.
Is that, are those grabbing rights, saying that we're in compliance now?
That's right.
Unless someone gets mad and reports us technically, there has to be an investigation.
Hang on, wait, let's make sure we all understand. And if I, if I say something that's incorrect, please yell and say, say that you know you're wrong. Probably ninety percent of, of our out of compliance was paperwork.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It wasn't about anybody calling in, because people are gonna call in. They call in all the time. That's fine, that's okay. That's what people do. It's okay. No problem. Um, but typically when people call in and we see everything all over Facebook. And, and it gets blasted saying, well, I called TCEQ, they're coming out. And they do come out and they look at it and they go, okay. Well, thanks. Make sure you send in the spill report or make sure you send in whatever it is.
Okay, so there's not a fee or fine attached every time they come out?
No, man.
No, not at all.
I had it under.
But, but literally, what, what most, what most of what you're seeing that cost right there is, is all the paperwork. And all the fees and, and, I mean, we, we, we were, we have never since I've been involved with council. That I ever remember hearing, and it's what going on six years.
Yeah.
Hang on, I guess I must have bumped my head hard. So, I have never in that, in that amount of time. Heard of us ever having any out of compliance issue for a water problem besides turbidity.
That's it.
And turbidity, folks, is dirt essentially.
It is, it is. And I have to issue a water notice if.
It's not, it's not a flesh eating, it's not a flesh eating.
No.
Microorganism, right? It's not, but, um, it's, it's muddy water. That's what it is. So.
Which usually happens when it rains a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Um, or, or if, or if we get a major break. I mean, you can have a major mainline break and what happens is, is whenever. That sucker's leaking, it's siphoning dirt into the water line.
Yeah.
And then when they get down there and they open it up and have to, they're having to fix it, well, they're in essentially a pool of muddy water. That the water's running, it's still siphoning dirt in there.
Good, good. That's a great explanation.
Yeah, I mean, we've never, we've never, since I've been involved with this city, we have never had any kind of a. Violation that was like, oh my gosh, y'all's water.
I do wanna add to, every, everything you said is spot on and thank you for that. Um, they, we do have a few citizens that call them very regularly. And they have to come out. They have to do an investigation. So what happens is, is let's say one of you guys called TCEQ and you say, hey, I got an issue with the water. They come out and before they ever say a word to me, they go to that location, they take samples, they test it. Then whatever they find, they call me and I have to meet them there. And then I have to test it. And if we come up with the same numbers, the same conclusions, whatever's derived from that situation. They may say, listen, the water's fine. It has color. And even though the color is not harmful, it's not gonna harm anyone. You need to issue this statement or, you know, you need to put it in your law on this date, at this time, the water was discolored. You flushed for this many minutes, this many gallons, it corrected the situation. And then they just move on.
Okay.
Nine times out of ten, they're never gonna call that person back.
Yeah.
They will if it's someone that calls.
Or repetitive, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. That's good explanations. Thank you.
But hopefully if I'm hard to do it, hopefully you're not.
Um, we should be proud of it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
A lot of that documentation issue stuff we've been working on and we've come a long way.
Let's keep on keeping on, on that for better.
Okay, here's my next one. This is the next to the last one. One, two, six, three, two, zero, eight, AMS collection water. There is nothing except from two years ago. Is that something that we just need to remove?
That was deleted. That's the line item from the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Yeah.
We removed it last year, but to keep all the numbers in the right lines, that's just sitting here, but it's not on our current budget.
Oh, it is, okay.
Okay. It was something that was there at twenty-two and was deleted last year.
And then the very last item down there, that WWTP construction twenty-fourteen, there's nothing there. So that, that's just something that's. It's one, two, six, three, two, one, four. That's something we just. Two, one, four, put one. It's one, two, six, three, two, one, four, dot one.
Yeah, page five.
Page five.
Page four.
We just didn't make that for some reason. It's on five.
It's on five?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's a loan.
On mine, it's.
Two and four dot one.
Oh, I see it right there. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it, wow, how did that jump like that?
Well, there's two that are, there's two lines that are completely blank.
Yeah.
WWTP construction, uh, sewer and then TWDB twenty-thirteen loan. The only concern with both of those is that if we do still have the current loans. And those payments are being lumped into something else, like I had found earlier today with the USDA payments. That maybe all of those payments were being donated to one bucket at one point, put into a different bucket last year.
See, that's what I think happened is, is we weren't putting those numbers in the correct places.
Absolutely.
We put it all in one place and it made the other ones look like there was nothing there. When they're, they're.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I started, I, I found today and I started kinda digging for some. Try and figure that out.
Well, one thing about it, we're all gonna have this almost figured out at the end of this year and the next year we're gonna have a whole system.
Hopefully, I think we will.
If I only give it to fund view, it'll be the clean version, it'll be easy to see and. Are you, are you moving on or are you thinking?
I, I remember these. I, and it may have been a net this year.
Those loans?
Yeah, I remember.
I know there's a twenty-thirteen loan. I, that's.
While they're listed.
It's actually a USDA loan.
They're not being cost in these before.
What does that stand for? That WWDB?
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
And the.
And Texas Water Development Board.
Okay, that's actually one of the USDA loans?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. That's one of the loans that's with BAWK. And that's the one I actually paid today.
I got confused on.
Yes, so that's the one I paid today that had to go out. Um, it's always due twice a year. So there should be two payments a year in that one.
So again, it's, it's the fact that they were previously all put in one place, even though they were all separate things. And they weren't put in those separate lines, so.
I think that loan was like a million two.
Something like that, yeah.
It was the first thing I voted on when I got on campus. The very first thing, it's been a million two.
We're still paying on it.
I nearly forgot it.
How many loans do we have out? Two, three, four, five. We're doing all of it, how much?
Yeah, yeah.
Give you that total number. There's third all over the place. Still finding, working through those.
About sixish.
Yeah, I was gonna say about six.
A little, little more than that.
It, it may be.
And my last one is on page five, one, two, six, three, two, one, six, point one, PayPal fees to get. Did anybody still use PayPal?
No, it's the same thing. It was deleted last year.
It was.
Yes, like one of those. I almost blazed them all out, but I didn't want it to look like there was two numbers underneath it, but. That has been deleted from last year. There's a couple of them that same way.
And I wanted a very clean P and L. Thank you.
Okay, and the bottom line on for me.
See, yeah, there was PayPal. We did spend PayPal.
You've got seventeen thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents over. Did you earmark that for something?
I did, um.
Okay.
I'm really. Seventeen thousand two eighty-nine.
Seventeen thousand two hundred eighty-nine seventy-four.
Why are y'all making faces at each other?
My ear says seventy-four.
Seventeen, two eighty-nine, twenty-six.
Yeah.
That minus figure.
Oh, I'm sorry, seventy-six cents, I'm sorry.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six cents, sorry.
It means our expenses come in.
I'm sitting here going E-class.
I was.
I, I will suggest that you probably won't see that number on the bottom. Because I'm, I'm thinking on a couple that maybe we shift some of those dollars to a couple of lines where I'm not certain. Maintenance supplies would be one.
Would that go a lot towards water line improvements or any of those improvements? Would that be much?
I think the maintenance supply is the most important.
Is it more important? Okay. That's all my questions.
Well, the problem with the water line improvements, well, I don't know, some of them may be, it might be.
Maybe. Well, we keep getting faster at this every year, that's good.
I think we should probably just go through it one more time, just to make sure we did.
I would like to start at page one.
You start asking your questions again, Robin?
No. I will, I mean, no.
All right, Robin, what all was that you had, starting on page one?
This is kind of to what y'all were just talking about. I mean, you know, money in and out, it's in and out. But, you know, do you plan in the city too? Like, how do we plan for projects that we want to do around this?
Well, planning for projects is really not the hard part. The hard part is the unforeseen, the things you can't predict. And every year, it's wild, it can swing way over to this side, or it can swing way over to this side. And every year that we try to anticipate that, it always must have run in the opposite direction.
Yeah, but I mean, not like, we don't even have a line item for potential projects that we want to do at, or like to, to stash money away over time for some things. Does that make sense?
It does, and we have talked about adding a line item for that.
Yeah.
Um, so that.
I mean, we, we, we don't have one that's designated to that, but I mean, your carryover would work.
It is your carryover, so, but the carryovers, it's, so it's not, it has nothing to do with anything other than, let's say, we carry over a hundred thousand in water sewer.
Yeah.
Then we can look, we can project what our payroll should be through the first quarter and then say, okay, after that, how are we trending right now in the coldest months of the year when we have the most breaks? How are we trending? Is this a bad year, is this a good year? So then we could potentially say, okay, well, we have this dollar amount left over that we can put over here in this contingency line. So.
It would probably be.
It's something Kevin and I have talked about now for going on four years, is how do we take that money and, and make it work?
Yeah, but when we looked at it, it really and truly, it only ended up being ten grand.
Yeah, it just, yeah.
It looks like a lot when you say, oh, we're carrying over eighty thousand dollars, oh, we're carrying over a hundred thousand dollars, yeah. It carries you through the first three months of the year, and that's all it's doing, it's just, you know.
And you're right, it's wild, it could be five thousand, it could be twenty thousand, you just don't know.
I, I get it.
How long does it take you at five or ten grand a year to get you to what's the project?
Right.
And a perfect example of.
That's the sad part.
Us, you know, something that came unexpected and effectively was snowing.
Well, so that right there, our costs went through.
That was, that almost devastated us, you know.
Well, think about when fiber came to town.
Yeah.
We burned through a year's worth of supplies in thirty days.
We still don't have brass.
Yeah, we still haven't recovered from that.
We still have not recovered from our brass stock, and we had a pretty darn good stock of brass.
We did.
Did they buy us anything for any of that?
They did, I thought they were supposed to pass.
That, that was a bad deal.
Definitely a discussion for a different situation.
Not, not, not to make your, your question and, and maybe your aspiration to be a new point, it needs to be something that we do start putting into our focus. Um, and, and I would, I, I would, I would, uh, I guess employ you to not let that fire burn out and to keep us all, keep us all looking at that fire going, hey, guys, look, isn't this fire nice and bright? Come on, guys, don't y'all want to help me with the fire?
I will just, I will just say this, like, you, you, the three of us, and you and me have talked, you and me have talked too, I've talked to everybody but you. You know, like, uh, seeing it on a line item, not just a project line item, but like a goal. So, because, you know, if you have ten thousand dollars laying around, it's too easy to go, oh, I need, you know, I, the, the tractor needs an overhaul or the summon, and so all of a sudden that ten thousand dollars disappears. But if you see it on a line item that says, project X, what we want to accomplish, then it's there, it's constantly in our faces, and we're more resident to spend that ten dollar, ten thousand dollars if we know there's a line item there that we should be holding on to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, out of sight, out of mind, so put it inside.
One of the things that the mayor has been suggesting is that we do that, and, you know, I threw him a curveball not that long ago because, you know, we're having this auction. And if you look at how many trucks we put in the auction, our fleet is gone. We, we have some trucks.
Yeah.
But even the ones we have left, besides the two new ones, they're not far from, they probably should have been in the auction.
Yeah.
So I floated an idea to him to think about, and I think at some point we'll probably come to all you guys to talk about it, is we need to buy some trucks.
Yeah.
We, we need to. And I would hate to, we can, I would hate to put them in INS and add to our debt if we can go buy them outright in cash.
Sure, of course.
And of course, it's not going to be a twenty, twenty-three or twenty-four, it's going to be a two thousand eighteen to a two thousand twenty, but it'll be in our price range. And we've found five separate places that deal with our type of truck that come with utility beds. Even some that have a little lift, so when we need to pull a pump out of a well that's twenty foot deep, it doesn't take four guys and a chain, and we risk someone getting injured. We have a lift that'll pull it right out.
Yeah.
So we've been exploring those options, I have been communicating with the mayor about what we're looking at. But I think that if the carryover is, is good for us going into this new year, that'll be something that we'll be bringing to all you guys to talk about and say, hey, here we are, you know, it's time to upgrade our fleet. And then he even said after that, that what we need to do is, once we upgrade our fleet, is every other year, we need to be trading one out, bringing one in. So that we're keeping our fleet current.
Yeah, we've got to do that, and I mean, at the end of the day, we've kind of, we're kind of just sitting stagnant. I mean, you know, we got to think about, as we keep moving from this year to the next year, we've got our, our backhoe, although, yeah, it's a very expensive piece of equipment, but you can only run these things so long until they start becoming expensive to run. And not, you know, not just expensive to run, but if you're downtime, what does that do to what you get to get your work done? I mean, I think that backhoe is a two thousand.
Two thousand four, or fifteen.
Fifteen, I was saying fifteen sixteen.
That's something that you use a lot.
Oh, yeah, and that's when we bought it, it was two thousand sixteen.
You know, but, I mean, we got a dump truck, thankfully, we, we, wherever we get a dump, man, there's so many things we can sit here and discuss and talks about, and, and I, I understand where you're going.
Yeah.
But the, I think the problem is with our city is we never really got on pace to, you know, keep the walls painted and, and maintenance, maintenance. For comparing this to our house.
Yeah.
To maintenance our house, to where we could plan to build that patio, or we could plan to, you know, do whatever that we really wanted to do to our house. You know, if you don't keep it up and don't maintenance it, you're spending that much more money on those things, and that's what we've been doing in our city. I mean, we've got that little blue tractor, we just spent, we spent like five thousand on that thing a couple of years ago to make it run, just because at the time, we couldn't afford to buy another tractor, but that little blue tractor needs to be in the auction this next year.
Well, not only that, we auctioned our sold the Ford, we had two tractors with a lower.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And we never replaced that one. So what we have is, is the general fund one, we don't have the water sewer tractors, so I mean.
And to Mike's credit, and he probably didn't want me to tell this, but the other day when I was at the, at the park at the plant, he drove up in his own vehicle, and he told me that he is using his vehicle to go to a lot of these jobs. So that's how critical this is, and he's got to have some vehicles.
He has been, I, I hate that he's doing it, but me and him had, had, me and him had serious conversations about it, you know? Um, and it was for reasons I don't like him to have to use his own vehicle, and it's just, I, I, I don't like it, but, you know, that's where we're at, and he's doing that to try to help.
Helps us.
So hopefully we'll be past that soon. No more questions on, on none of this? Good, what was that, on page one?
Stop it.
Now my real questions begin. Robin and I have part B.
Right.
Well, Leon's got a lot of stuff to throw, I think he was waiting, he was waiting till we were all done talking. All right, Leon, we're to you now.
I was to you.
Robin answered all my questions.
So that takes us to number seven.
A second.
So we got a motion by Chris, seconded by Robin.
Yes.
Leon had his hand up, Jack, the corner.
And then it passed across the board. All right, uh, I mean, we're out of here at seven fifty-one.